As we invoke your presence, it is really ourselves we call to attention, to offer the best we can in public service, to put aside ego and self-interest as we consider the common good, to truly listen and learn about different perspectives and innovations, to make difficult decisions, and to offer the fruits of our labor for the good of all who live, work, volunteer in, and visit our borough. For our failings, we ask forgiveness and understanding, as we pledge to work diligently in our given tasks. May there be peace on our streets, in our homes and places of business, and in our hearts. We give thanks for this day as we offer ourselves anew in service. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, some committee reports. Councilor Colp is not here. Anything you want to, I know it's last minute.
Oh, that's okay. Everybody has notes on the agenda, but there's a couple of things that I think are important to mention. The Pollock Mini Park, if everybody has not noticed, came down in November and it no longer exists as a park. What's really exciting, though, is Justin Keller, who's the first area recreation circuit rider, is going to take a look at this in the future and see what they can do to repurpose it, and he has experience in landscape design and planning. And also, it's important to note that two fixed cameras on the area-wide IP network with live feed to the Pottstown Police Department will be installed at Memorial Park. Vandalism continues to be an ongoing and costly issue in the park.
Okay, any questions? Public safety, Councilor Vice President Gary?
Meeting Monday.
Economic development, anything, Erica?
We are progressing with our Keystone Economic and Employment Plan. Tomorrow, we have a presentation. Steve Bamford and I will be doing a cooperative municipal presentation to the Tri-Kinney Chamber of Commerce on that. So our RFP has been advertised. We look forward to receiving the proposals. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Transportation, once again, Councilor Miller?
I do sit on that committee and I'll turn to Erica for...
Guess the airport's isn't running?
Oh, yes, it is. The FDO is doing quite well under our new lease agreement. In addition, part, we had our annual audit. That's complete. No findings. It's always good, right on budget. In addition, our part RFP has gone out, so a lot of things moving on that. So, thank you.
Okay, we're getting community center, anything, Councilor Kirkland?
No.
Okay, there is minutes in your packet. Pottstown School Board, I did see School Director Williams.
He's hiding in the back here. Not much, you know, our children have returned to us safely after a nice vacation, Christmas vacation, and we're real excited to start this phase of the academic year. I just want to remind folks that our campaign to raise funds for the stadium lights is still around, so if any of you feel extremely generous to help us out, we still, we have another $100,000, I think, to reach a goal, not the final goal, but the goal that we've set right now, so if you haven't, sit in the room. And the other, only other thing I have is we look forward to our joint meeting on the 29th at Rupert Elementary School. It is a public meeting. It is a joint meeting between the school board and council, and I invite folks to come out and spend the night with us.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, did you warm up yet from your plunge into the river?
That was the greatest swim I've had in all year.
Came out, he was blue. Okay, up to the ad hoc zoning and animal, Councilor Miller?
Okay, let's do animal first because there's a recommendation out of the committee. We had just recently changed the fees for the daily kennel fee to $30, and we're looking at the hours and additional fees for after-hours. So for the kennel to operate at $30 a day for pickup of your dog or cat, the hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is our recommendation. If the animal is picked up by 11:00 a.m. the following day, it's not going to get an additional daily fee. So it'll be, just like hotel checkout, $30 until 11:00 a.m. the following day. However, if animals are to be picked up after 5:00 p.m., because we're utilizing our ACO and our police department services at that point, there would be an additional $40 fee to receive your animal after 5:00 p.m.
Okay, those are recommendations, I guess that would be funny to do, I guess, as far as putting in a piece structure and then vote along.
Oh, zoning, also zoning. I am a little concerned about, a little concerned, this is jumping the gun on the agenda a little bit, but about the boarding house conversion on South Street with more than three times the currently allotted units, because we're currently in the zoning committee discussing, we're in discussion about the need for additional parking for such uses, and we're also reviewing parking needs for all businesses and commercial and public and private assembly at this time.
Okay, any other questions? That's Councilor Gary's board, so when we get to that, we're in discussion on Monday. Okay, and bicentennial, so Mike Glennhardt. Okay, that's Councilor Colp, and we have a meeting next Tuesday, so it's been rescheduled from yesterday, so Republicans invited to come and see. Okay, we're up to the presentation for the Better Landlord Program.
Hi, my name's Mark Kubricki. I work with the Better Landlord Program. Our company is Better City, and we are very grateful to be here that the city invited us to perform this municipal services study. I want to preface my remarks by talking just a little bit about the Better Landlord Program. I know you had a presentation on it, but I'll just mention just a couple of things that may be useful. The Better Landlord Program is really an idea that has worked with a number of cities to help to stabilize the rental community, to benefit not only tenants but landlords as well, and to improve the quality of rental housing, and to work together in a cooperative fashion with city landlords and tenants in order to improve an important part of the housing stock. No city is successful without having good rental housing, and it's one of the core competencies that everybody strives for. There's a lot of challenges, though, involved, and the study was really meant to quantify what the impact is of rentals on the borough of Pottstown. And that's really where we started to analyze this data, to see what is happening here and really what should be our next steps. The company that I work for is Better City, and I should mention, too, that Better Landlord is just one of the tools that we use. We're really primarily an economic development firm that works with cities to create jobs and economic opportunity, to increase private investment, to build a more sustainable tax base, and to diversify the local economy. Better Landlord is one of those tools. And the program really works by identifying what the issues are that the borough needs to address, engaging the landlord community in the fashion, really, so that there is education on what are the best practices, what standards are generally accepted in the community, and then making sure that people are compliant with the requirements of the program. And as we go through this data, you'll see that it really is not only a voluntary program, but it has benefits for the landlords as well as for the town and for the tenants. This data we brought together was from county sources, from Montgomery County text, parcel information, information that was provided by the borough and other research that we were able to pull together. Really, in order to do a study of what the costs are and what it takes, what the impact is of rental housing involves call ratios. Now, briefly explain what this is. A call ratio of one would be that property received one call for that service per year. So in this case, you'll notice that for owner-occupied, .16 calls for code enforcement were received on average to those that were owner-occupied properties. And you can see the higher numbers here. These are the different types of rental properties. And the same holds true for fire. Owner-occupied had .03 fire calls, and then those are the other ratios. The largest, as you can tell, is police calls, where almost half a call per year per owner-occupied property, and then the numbers well over one for most of the other rental properties. So that gives you a ratio of how many calls to different properties. And we went through and called out all the properties within the borough. We looked at commercial properties, we looked at residential properties, and then these are the two types of residential properties. So absent from this is commercial properties within the borough. These are all just the residences. So now, from that ratio, we took a look at the costs, and these are the amount of cost per call. You'll notice in each of these sections, a code call is $131, and then you look at a police call, it's $142. As you might expect, fire calls, because of the equipment and the manpower, is quite a bit higher, and there's also fewer calls. So we looked at ratio, and then we looked at disproportionate cost by, and these are just for the rental properties here, disproportionate cost. And from this, you get a disproportionate rental fee calculation. And that's, this information is in graph form in the study that you have in front of you. And so we find for rental properties, on average, and this, by the way, when I say "disproportional," this is taking what it costs to provide these services to owner-occupied properties and backing that out. So this is, if you'll see this line right here, that represents the cost for owner-occupied, and so this is all above that. So you figure there's a base rate, which is the amount that an owner-occupied property costs the city, and this is the additional amount that rentals cost. And so from this, you get a blended rate, which is really the amount that we're showing here, of $135 per unit. So what that says is, on average, a rental property costs the city $135 more per unit per year than an owner-occupied property does. This varies by town. I've seen it as low as $30 per unit, and some towns I've seen as high as 300. And really, that amount doesn't mean anything, it doesn't mean Pottstown is worse than other cities, or it's better than other cities. It just means these are your costs. This is what you're bearing. And we didn't do qualitative analysis of why this is, other than these were the areas with code enforcement, with public works, with fire, and with police. And so you could say, well, those costs would be a lot higher if you spread administrative costs per rental unit and some other costs. These are, these costs, however, I think are ones that you can identify as being specific to rental properties. And so really, the question becomes, what are the options that the council has at this point? And I suppose there are three of those. One is to do nothing, and say, that's interesting information, it means it's costing a lot, rental properties are costing a lot, and now we've quantified it, we know what that is. And frankly, this provides a baseline to perform a study at some others and see what the trends are, to see if these costs are climbing or they're getting lower. So that certainly is one of the options. However, most cities, when they identify a problem like this, and this is significant cost, we consider how many thousands of rentals there are in Pottstown. And also, I think one of the concerns, I know that the city administrators have, is that there's an increase in costs, the perception that there's an increase in costs attributable to rental properties. And I think that is a general desire, too, that you want rental properties to be of a high quality. That's a core competency that every borough would like to have. So that's the one option, is to take the information and do nothing with it. The other option is to say, well, since it's costing more for rental property, we need to charge these costs because it's unfair that owner-occupied properties are, in effect, in a very real sense, subsidizing the rental properties. So it's unfair to property owners that are occupying their own homes to be subsidizing this. And so you can just charge those to the rentals, and that would certainly get closer to a fair situation from a financial perspective. The third option, and the one that I'm most associated with, is to say, well, how about if we work in a cooperative way and implement a Better Landlord Program where, if landlords agree to abide by a higher standard, to do those kind of best practices that will result in higher property values, lower crime rates, more improved communities and sense of neighborhoods, reinvestment into the properties, and those types of things that are considered to be beneficial, then the city, through the Better Landlord Program, could require the landlords to meet the higher standards, for the which they would be forgiven, all or part of this additional fee per unit. And they abide by these principles, receive training, agree to partner with the borough in crime reduction, self-reporting when there's issues, crime prevention through environmental design, a whole host of virtuous activities, which are not required by a statute at this time. And if the landlords volunteer to be in this program, then that fee would be forgiven. There is also the option that the landlords can opt to pay the additional amount that they're consuming, and they would not have to participate in the program, so it is voluntary. The thing that we have noticed in the cities where we've implemented this is about 90% of the landlords say, that just makes good financial sense for us. Landlords have found that they are able to collect more rents because they're screening tenants, that will pay the rent on time, will not cause damage to their properties, and will help them to protect their investment, which is also a good thing for the borough as well. They also find that by using the techniques received through the training, that the good landlords are justified in reinvesting in their properties and helping to improve the quality of housing stock in the borough. And I think really what you're trying to prevent is, as a borough, most towns are, is to prevent this downward spiral where property values are lowering, the tax base is eroding, it makes no sense to invest in properties if the value of it will not sustain the additional reinvestment into the property. What you want is a healthy rental market. It helps in recruiting jobs and doing a lot of the economic development activities that towns need. And that's really, from my perspective, is where we've seen the power of this program, is when everybody's on the same page. Police know that landlords are participating in the program, and so they'll give a heads-up to the landlord, saying, did you know that there was an incident at your property last weekend? You should be aware of that. And it gives the landlord the opportunity to go to the tenant and say that you may not have been charged with a crime, but it is in violation of the Better Landlord statutes for you to engage in this type of behavior, even though it doesn't rise to criminal activity. It is a nuisance, it is causing erosion of quality of life, and therefore, you need to take corrective measures, otherwise, you'll be in trouble with your landlord. These type of activities, it increases communication. Certainly, codes is very interested in this because you'll have self-reporting, not only from landlords, but also from tenants, too. Tenants understand what their rights are, they understand that this is a program where everybody's on the same page, we're trying to accomplish the same thing. It's not an activity by the borough to assess more fines and fees. The idea is to improve quality of life and have less code violations and less fines and less criminal activity and those type of areas. It's worked surprisingly well. I think the power of it is it's a voluntary program. People can exit the program or come into the program by choice. There are fees involved, so there's great incentives for people to participate in it, but at the same time, it's based on their choice. I will say, having driven around town, you have some beautiful architecture here. Certainly, you could stand some significant reinvestment in a lot of the housing stock here in order to preserve these great buildings. I think that you, from what I've been able to tell, both by the study, which certainly supports the financial aspects of it, but also from a quality of life perspective, I think you'd be an excellent candidate for the Better Landlord Program. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
You mentioned a crime prevention by environmental design.
Yes.
Can you give me some examples of what you mean?
Yeah. When you look at police calls, you'll, sometimes you'll get a call of someone lurking around a property or looking in windows and those type of things. Crime prevention through environmental design emphasizes such things as perimeter lighting, cutting down landscaping, so someone driving by can see there aren't hidden alcoves where people can conduct criminal activity or not be seen from the street, of keeping properties free of waste and other things where can create an attraction for criminal activity. So there's a whole host of ideas that involve the physical aspects of the building with, you know, simple things like a motion detector, lighting, and those things. And while they're not, they don't specify specific things, they give general principles that help to increase the quality. And most of them are relatively local, especially trimming, rather than having seven-foot hedges where someone can hide behind it and crawl in a window, you have the hedges down at two or three feet, where, you know, if someone was standing there, you would see them clearly from the street, and they could be reported from other residents and things like that. So it's really just taking advantage of the physical environment you have to not create attractiveness for criminal activity or vandalism or any of those kind of things.
Thank you.
You said there was 90% participation?
Yes, I was quite surprised by that. And I think most landlords, especially good landlords, recognize, yeah, it's about time. I'm already doing most of this stuff. But yet, I will say, in the classes that I directly taught, I haven't found a class yet where landlords didn't learn techniques that helped them to not only comply better with what the borough requires, but helped them to make a more profitable venture, so that they can afford to reinvest in it and to maintain it. So there is, I mean, the other side of that is, there will be 10% or so that choose not to be in the program.
Right.
And the way, depending on how, and it's customized to every city, every borough. But depending on how you set it up, that would mean there would be $135 per unit for some 10% of them that would say, I'm not going to go to class, I'm not going to agree to participate in something, I'm going to conduct business the way I'm currently doing.
Is there a specific reason, besides just being independent and not participating in the program, is there a specific reason why the 10% decides not to participate that you can gather?
I can only surmise, I don't know for sure, I haven't really interviewed a lot of those landlords. Some of them don't want to be told what to do, there's certainly that aspect to it, I suppose. But also, you know, if the borough chooses to have a statute where, as part of the statute, which most cities do, is screening for criminal activity, some landlords say, I won't be able to fill up my apartments if I don't rent to criminals. And so they say, well, no, I'm still going to rent to criminals, and I'm not going to be in the program. But the nice thing is, it'll be 90% will say, yeah, it doesn't make good business sense anyway. And especially with crimes where there's a high recidivism rate, it really doesn't make sense for the borough to not address some of those issues with recent criminal activity where recidivism is so high.
And you said, besides the fee reduction or forgiveness, there's programs and classes and things like that?
Yes. Yeah, and that's where our group comes in. We would enter into a memorandum of agreement with the borough to help to structure the program, and you would need to come up with the ordinances, but we could, you know, assist and show sample ordinances of other cities. And really, you decide yourselves what aspects you want to have, and we wouldn't make recommendations.
As far as what incentives are?
Exactly. Not only what the incentives are, but what the requirements are. You know, we recommend screening for credit history, screening for criminal activity. We recommend having a written lease agreement with tenants, copies being provided to the tenants, that there be written criteria for selecting candidates that's given before they even apply, so they know that these are the standards. If you're going to rent in Pottstown, these are the standards. And most of these are things that most good landlords are doing anyway. But to have a level playing field where the good landlords are being supported, and those who are maybe uninformed or just trying to raise those kind of standards, everybody's on the same playing field. And then those types of, again, depending on what the borough chooses for years, and it is specific to what the problems are. I mean, crime is an issue in Pottstown, to be sure, and that's one that we would recommend that you take a look at screening for, especially for recent criminal activity, where it becomes a revolving door, and, you know, when a parole officer, when the police are given a copy of the list of recent parole people, and they look at these addresses, and they see that these are Better Landlord folks, then they can go to the landlord and say, did you know that your new client is a recent released felon in violation of this part of the statute and those kind of things? So it helps. It's a better communication, everybody's on the same page. And, you know, again, you're trying to give yourself a fighting chance to improve it, and it's not just one land, and you have a number of really good landlords in Pottstown, clearly. You look at, drive around, you see some of these properties, and people have tried to maintain them, but at the same time, you've got some next door to it where either because the rents aren't high enough, or that the reinvestment wasn't a priority for the landlord. And so you wonder, why would the good landlord be reinvesting his property when the person next to him is not? And the rents are largely equalized within the neighborhoods. So you're trying to create an incentive for people to not only maintain the standards, but also to improve the quality of the neighborhoods. And that, and it affects, the thing that we've found is that it affects mostly the owner-occupied in those areas. You hear a lot of complaints from the owner-occupied saying, it's, you know, what is the borough doing about these issues? Well, you know, I know, having worked with a number of cities and boroughs, that a lot is being done, but you need additional tools, and this is one of the tools that really helps do that.
I'm not sure if you mentioned this or not, but in your past experience, have you, has these other cities, did they have actual landlords participating in the implementation of the program, or are they part of the process?
Yes, yeah, and I think that you want community, when you're creating the standards, you want to ask, what kind of things are important to you? What kind of things would be most beneficial? And when you look at those options that are available, to say, yeah, And when you look at those options that are available, to say, yeah, it'd be great. If everybody would do this, it'd be great. I don't want to do it just by myself, but if everybody in Pottstown was doing this, it would make perfect sense to me. Because, you know, the market, you don't want to scare away prospective tenants, but at the same time, you want tenants who meet the criteria. They're going to pay their rent on time. They're going to take care of the property. They're not going to participate in criminal activity. They're not going to create a nuisance. And if everybody's screening for that, then folks that don't have good intentions will have to go elsewhere. And that's part of raising community standards together, not just to the apartment next door, but to other places.
I kind of think you've got to have really strong incentives, other than the fee. You've got to have strong incentives for them to participate.
Well, I think profitability is part of it, protecting your investment, I think, hoping you get a return. And also, rather than seeing a downward spiral in costs or in values that you're seeing that they're not only sustained, but you're starting to see that they're increasing. And that's ultimately one of the benefits to the borough, is the fact that property values will increase. And then you can charge lower taxes and still raise the same or more taxes.
And I kind of think that, you know, if the other incentives, aside from the fees, are not strong enough, I still kind of feel that some landlords would rather pay the fee than be involved and have these extra, you know, rules or, you know, imposed upon them.
Yeah. And again, every city is different, but we have found that, again, the vast majority seem to comply. They kind of understand. I think the training is part of it, too. Nobody likes to sit through several hours of training. I know I've taught the classes, and most people don't come in excited about it, but they leave armed with information. And I think what we have found, at least in the first city that we implemented this program, landlords found that they made about 11% more rental revenue that first year, and they were quite surprised by that. They thought it was going to cost them more. And I think, again, it's because the screening was done, and they had tenants that were paying on time. And they knew what tools were available, should tenants not meet their obligations, that they could be, you know, they could serve notice, and that they didn't wait and let problems get where they were unsolvable. And that's sometimes what happens, too, is you let rent go way, way, way too long, and there's no possible way of recovering.
What's the financial cost to the borough to implement the program through your organization?
Yeah, the way that Better City has structured this is, we make our fees based on providing the training. We have an ongoing relationship with the landlords in which we provide training, and we usually recommend that the training be every other year. And so we charge directly to the landlord. So there's no cost to the borough, but we charge a training fee to the landlords and a registration to be in the program. And then we would certify to the borough that they meet the education requirement, and that they have certified that they will meet these standards. And so there is some cost to the borough in implementing internally, so there's some record-keeping. But we would provide the information and a database to the borough for that information. So it's largely transparent. Any fees that are paid for the training would be paid directly to us. And that's how we recover our costs for setting up the program over time. And we usually require a multi-year commitment from the borough, so we can recover our costs over that period of time. And also, as I mentioned, we're an economic development firm primarily. We clearly like the idea that we're working in concert with the borough, and that as other opportunities come up for us to provide additional services, that the borough would consider us for economic development projects or other consulting that might be available. But that's completely your option.
Would then the cost to the landlord to participate in the program with the registration and training be more than what they would receive as an incentive of elimination of the rental fees for the borough?
No, no. I mean, the training fees are modest in comparison to these fees. It's certainly less than $135 that they pay, yeah. And again, it depends on what's in the curriculum, what you decide to put into the program. But generally, the training is somewhere between four and six hours of training. So it's pretty extensive. And I can tell you, having taught the classes, that especially on the four-hour side, you're pushing right to the, you know, it's a lot of information. And the question I didn't answer was about the, about working with landlord groups, particularly in the state of Utah, where the program's been the longest. The Utah Apartment Association is a partner with us on that. They recognize the value to their members, that they will protect their investment. And in fact, the Utah Apartment Association does a lot of the training in that state. They helped not only to structure the program, but also provided a lot of input into the curriculum for the training on that. And I would recommend the same here. If there's organized apartment associations or landlord groups that you should participate, because, again, it's, this is not adversarial. This really is, and while there's often the impression that they're being singled out, it's really not. I mean, the data points to the fact that there's an issue. And really, once you identify an issue, what's the best way to address that? And this is a voluntary way that is a win-win, as we look at it.
Are there any other areas in Pennsylvania utilizing the Better Landlord program?
Well, we're out in the Pittsburgh area. We're working actually on the Ohio side with some cities in that area. But this is the first one, certainly in the Philadelphia area. And as you can imagine, and we've talked to staff about this, too, we'd very much like to, and we've talked with Norris Town and with folks in Phoenixville. And really, it's not really been us. It's been the grassroots groups that have gone out and talked with some of the communities and saying, you know, how do we work around this issue? You know, how can we create some incentives as opposed to just being punitive? And it tends to be a lot better accepted that way. So, yeah, we would like to see a number of communities in this area. And I think, too, it makes sense for Pottstown, that if tenants who are going to engage in criminal activity or not be good tenants from rent paying or whatever, you don't just want to transfer that problem to the neighboring town. You'd like to see the community-wide or regional initiative where everybody says, these are our standards. We have higher standards here. It becomes an attraction for people. In fact, from a landlord's perspective, if they are able to earn this Better Landlord approval, tenants will be looking for that. They'll want to know that it's a place that meets at least these standards. And that if there's a problem, the council would be interested, the city would be interested in a landlord who is in violation of the program, because that would jeopardize their standard. And also landlords would know that the city was supporting them when they were to evict someone who doesn't meet the criteria for the program. So it creates a much better atmosphere, I think, and the communication is drastically improved.
You mentioned that the program is voluntary. However, if someone opts not to be involved, they have to pay the difference.
Yeah, the fees.
Okay, so that means that it's directly mandated, because...
Well, it's implied that there's a strong encouragement, financial incentive, to do that. But no one's required to participate in the program.
So is there a point where you would consider it out of equity? Like, you know, in your experience, you've seen 90% buy-in.
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of landlord groups here.
Sure.
Well, at least one that I know of, that's operated through the cluster, where they have a group of landlords that consider they're self-responsible. So, for example, if a group such as those would opt out, and they're paying the $135, then they're going to get hit with the, you know, the inspection.
Sure.
You know, they're looking at it like it's really coming across against their bottom line. But when you're talking about screening for criminal activity, some of these incidents are evasive, that involve people that are not on the lease. So that gets into county, you know.
Yes.
Who's the county?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's an issue that comes up at every training session, is, I don't have any control over what my tenants do. Well, that's not true. You have a lease document. That's a civilly enforceable document. Courts recognize that as a binding agreement. And if someone is not on the lease, on the lease, they shouldn't be in your property. They don't have a legal standing to be there. And so certainly, a notice to quit would be served by the landlord. I'm getting into some of the technical things. Or it's a trespass. And now that the police would know that, you know, if someone says, so-and-so's trespassing on my property, you get that amount, they say, well, that's between you and the tenant. Well, the city's now, the borough is now participating in this program, and the police would understand that, no, this is not just between the landlord and the tenants, also between the city. Because the city has an interest in this, because they put forward this program. So from that perspective, it gives the landlord a little more courage to enforce the lease on there. But if someone's not on the lease, they shouldn't be in the property.
Oh, yeah, we know.
Yeah. And, but...
The evasive nature of crime is, who can be in the building for how long and create trouble and leave?
And that should be spelled out in the lease.
Right.
And that's part of the training that we provide, is this, you know, this is how you enforce that. And again, if it's citywide, it becomes a lot easier to enforce than if it's just one person with an issue, too. And as you're, you know, when you're screening, when you're screening your tenants, those are the kind of questions. And when you check references from future, from past landlords, and ask questions, were there people that were not on the lease on the property? Well, those individuals who have a history of those kind of problems, sometimes past is prologue. And so there is an issue for them to say, you don't meet my criteria to rent here. So you try to, as much as you can, you try to head off problems before they become problems. And then, once they become a problem, identify it quickly and take action. And it requires requirements from the courts as well, because there's contract enforcement that's being done. The courts need to understand that, you know, this is an entire community saying, these are the standards that we want. And so the courts will be much more amenable than in the current situation where it's a case-by-case basis.
Because, you know, the first yell is housing discrimination. I mean, it's just always the case. You know, the landlords will say, well, now you're discriminating against us by imposing this, and then the tenants are discriminating against us because of this. But I think, in general, those who opt out in prior, you know, subsequent instance, if they end up having a problem in there, there has to be something very strong that's sent to them for opting out and then having a problematic issue. But then, when you look at it again, in philosophical point of view, it's like firing the coach because the team lost.
Yeah.
Then, you know, that's out of equity, too, because...
Yeah, and I think, from the perspective of the landlord who opts out, even though the vast majority of the tenants of the Better Landlord program are virtuous and beneficial to the landlord, there may be some that opt out. But they are still required to meet codes. They're still required to meet the Commonwealth requirements for health and safety and all those. So, you know, so I'm not exactly sure, when you opt out, you still have to maintain, you may not have specific requirements about what's in the lease, or reporting, or those type of things. But I would think that, you know, again, unless there's some problem with absentee landlords or something, and even in that situation, they can designate an agent, so that the city has some contact, a person that's close by to make it so there. It generally benefits all the parties. It is not, I will say this much, it is not singling out any class of people. It's asserting the borough's right to maintain standards and to act in the public interest. That's how I look at it.
Thank you.
I'd like to revisit your speech or your section about profitability for the landlords. And I noted that you mentioned there's normally an 11% increase in revenue.
Well, no, that was the situation in that first city. They self-reported that. I couldn't verify those numbers, because I never had them. But they self-reported that they had, and that was through the association.
Okay. And then, we just talked about leases and the meeting of the minds between landlord and tenant. Do you have examples of leases or...
Well, actually, I would work through the associations, because there's some excellent templates that are available for the Commonwealth that have been used. And you'd want to look at them and tailor them for those. But, you know, we wouldn't, obviously, as I said in that disclaimer, we wouldn't give legal advice or accounting advice, or, I mean, we're not attorneys or accountants. But at the same time, you can say, here's a document that's been used by others. And we encourage landlords to be part of associations, because there's legislation that's changing all the time. And I mentioned that the training is every two years. In two years' time, there's a lot of things that have changed. There's things that have changed in the borough. And also landlords are interested to know how things are happening here. Has crime dropped? Has the program been effective? Has the borough seen reduction in the costs of providing essential services? Has there been a general improvement in the quality of life in those? So that's part of it. But there are a ton of statutory changes, and best practices change. And, you know, we also are in a number of states, and so we try to bring best practices from other states into each locale and share those ideas. And the landlords themselves have a lot of ideas to share as well. You know, it's, there's competition between landlords, for sure. But the things that landlords have in common far outnumber the things that they disagree on. You know, there's still, it's an investment, it's a significant investment that's hazarded by tenants who don't take care of the property and do damage, and bring people that shouldn't be there. And it's, you know, it's a significant amount of investment.
I don't know about Utah, but here, we have a district justice system, so that if there are code violations or landlord-tenant issues, it doesn't go to a common pleas court. It normally goes to our local magistrates. If you've experienced how there's cooperation at that level in other places, do you share that with us?
Yes, yeah. And I've had, I've been in training sessions, I hear complaints from landlords that the magistrates turn a deaf ear. California is a great example, where a judge may say something to the effect, well, where is this person going to live if you evict him? And so there's a wide range, where judges tend to be more pro-tenant, more pro-landlord. Really, what we're looking for is fairness, that there's an understanding. And I think, again, the education, when the district administrative law judges or magistrates understand what is happening, why it's important, and that the community is looking for the judicial systems to be fair, but concise.
Would you be willing to cooperate in meeting with the district magistrates?
Yeah, and in fact, we...
Having them buy into it?
We would, in this area, we would partner, again, with the landlord associations. And I think there's a role also for the borough as well, to say, oh, yeah, we support this. We want healthy landlords.
Right.
It's important for the borough that we have healthy landlords.
It's seldom stated from this area. But if we have 1,000 landlords out there, or 500 landlords for all the rentals, that means we have 500 businesses here in town. They're all filing a Schedule C.
I agree.
And we want to encourage the growth of business.
They pay taxes, they buy things here. Yeah, they're an asset to your community. And if you're trying to recruit businesses, people don't generally move into an area and first purchase a home. They generally rent first and then purchase. And the quality of the rental housing has a direct impact on their longevity here in the community.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we got a lot of information tonight. What I'm going to do is send us back to the Infrastructure Committee with staff to come up with a recommendation as to the next step. Mull it over. Please keep the landlord association in the loop. We decide to go to that next step and see where it takes us. Okay?
Steve, before we move on in the agenda, I'm going to have to step out for a few minutes at eight o'clock. And as you mentioned during Cheryl's ad hoc committee report, item 13 on the agenda, the zoning matter. Is my word, would you be willing to go out of order and address that before I leave? Thank you. I'd just like to let council know, I got several phone calls, spoke with several residents in the neighborhood where this property exists. All of them are opposed to the application that's been submitted. I looked at it and, you know, as I see it, I do not believe the application establishes a unique and unusual hardship that would result from complying with the current zoning requirements as they are. And I believe a variance, if a variance were to be granted, it would certainly not be beneficial to the neighborhood. In fact, I think would be detrimental. So I just wanted to let council members know. On Monday, I intend to make a motion that we, as council, express our strong opposition to the application.
Okay, we'll have that listed also along with that. If you would like to, we could also send our solicitor-
Yes.
... to the meeting. We'll have that listed. Okay. Continuing on now with the presentation from Housing Visions.
Hello, I'm Judy member from Genesis Housing. And this is Heather Shorter from Housing Visions. And we're back again. So I want to thank you for giving us time to give you an update and to ask for your support on the project, the street factory, which we've been talking about the last few years. We applied for tax credits. The first time we put in an application just to sort of see what the state thought of the project. We had a fairly good response to the project, the location, the type of renovation to that, to a vacant building. Last year, we put in an application which we really hoped to get the funding. And we came really, really close. And the state, PHFA, Penn State Housing Finance Agency ranks projects, and they give points. And they give points for every one of these segments in this lovely application that they require you to submit. And Heather's going to talk a little bit about what's in the application every year. But we were short a few points. And so we look at what we can do if we're going to resubmit. And the state did encourage us to resubmit. But if we resubmit, what can we do to improve the project? And initially, they get a lot of projects in, and then there's an initial screening. And then they look at all the other projects. And all of those projects are good projects. They're exciting projects. They are bringing, renovating properties, are building new construction for affordable rental units across the state. And so it's a tough decision. And for our project, there were things that we didn't get points for. We had to get a conditional use approval last year. And when we, the date of submitting, we hadn't gotten the approval. We have gotten the approval from you, and we're very grateful for that. But we didn't get points for it because it wasn't there when we put it in. So this year, it'll be there. And one of the things that's not officially points, but is very much part of the thing, is political support. And we did really well in the community support section, but we didn't on the political support. And we didn't ask you directly for a letter of support. But we are this year, because we're trying to really maximize the points. Because this room is really it. Genesis Housing has been in Pottstown for a long time now. We've done a lot of renovations, new construction. But we've not been able to take on big properties. We were a small partner of the Jefferson School renovation when we first started working in Pottstown. But we've done mostly single-family houses, new construction of houses. But these big properties are very difficult to figure out what to do. And they drag down the neighborhood around them. And so we really wanted to bring a qualified developer in. And so we brought Housing Visions in. We're going to talk a little bit more about the project. And then, we've been talking, and I've been talking about what Good Job Housing Visions has done. But we brought a little video that will end our presentation that is other people talking about what Housing Visions has done in other communities. So we really do want you to hear from other places that have been in your position and have joined with Housing Visions on redevelopment projects that have brought significant improvements to their communities. So in the handouts, we've provided information about the project just to sort of refresh your memory. It's in my memory from even working on it all year. But it's been about a year since we really talked to council. So it's the Fisera's building at Beach and Evans. It has been empty for many, many years. It is not getting in better shape as the time has gone by. The area around it has not been improving. And we're proposing forty-three apartments. And then Art Fusion to be the tenant to move their art school so they can have an ADA compliant school situation that can allow more groups to come in, providing a very affordable rent for them so they could be stable and survive and thrive as an important part of Pottstown's cultural life. We'll be providing six ADA units and two for hearing and vision units. So we'll be serving some handicapped people who right now do not have units easily available. And then we're going to end up with a $12.7 million investment. And that only works because we layered subsidies in that from the government and from the tax credits. Because on the private market, this building would not get renovated. I mean, the original owners, that was their intention, and it's just not feasible. And so putting in tax credits is a guarantee for thirty years of the types of management and the good landlord process. The best practices are what's implied in a tax credit project. So I'm going to let Heather talk a little bit more about the investment and the property management.
Thanks, Judy. So, it's great to see you all again. Thank you again for having us. One thing I wanted to call your attention to, I handed out a letter from Obi Myle of Mass Breone and Associates. They are our market analyst on this project. And Obi actually lives up the street from our project site on North Evans. She's a Pottstown resident and an expert. For fifteen years, she has been a market analyst, writing these kinds of studies. She's done ninety-nine market studies to date on multi-family rental developments. And the way that these are used is to lay out the facts for the state, who, you know, the folks in Harrisburg are less familiar with each of the municipalities across the Commonwealth that are looking for the company. So her report serves to outline basically the local demographics and the market conditions that necessitate this kind of investment in Pottstown. So just as some of the excerpts from her report, she had intended to be here tonight and is unfortunately homesick with the flu. So she did want me to pass along these statistics to you. For example, the median year that houses were built in Pottstown is 1943. And less than 5% of the housing here has been built since 1990. And it's wonderful to have historic building stock. But there are certain limitations in terms of the quality of that housing if there isn't reinvestment to maintain a certain standard of those units. Of the 10,000 housing units in Pottstown, 44% are rented. The median income here is $37,781. And based on the tax credit rents that the state specifies, she calculated that more than half of all Pottstown households would qualify for the affordable units that we are offering. One point that we want to emphasize is that Montgomery County is a very high-income county relative to the rest of the Commonwealth. So when you look at the average rents throughout Montgomery County, they're higher than a lot of county average rents elsewhere in the state. So an average, you know, an affordable rent in Pottstown might be a higher income rent somewhere else. We're lucky in that regard, that these are higher than usual average rents. And the table that she put forth here shows that the minimum household income for one of our units would be $8,850. That's restricted to six of the units. And those are the ones that we discussed previously are supported by people who are already enrolled in Montgomery County Supportive Housing Programs. Those are the folks with developmental disabilities who will be serving. For everyone else, the minimum household income that they have to meet is $22,000 a year. And the maximum income is $51,000 a year. So you can see there's a considerable range. But I think all of those income levels are, you know, close to home. Those are your friends and neighbors and people who already live in Pottstown and might not have a choice right now in terms of this standard of high-quality housing that they would like to be in. The purpose of this reinvestment is to provide an alternative. High-quality housing that is affordable to people who already live in Montgomery County, specifically in Pottstown. And, you know, to give them a choice. It's also going to be a different aesthetic, something a little bit more industrial and artsy-looking. Another point from Obi's report is about accessibility. On the county statistics state that some tenants who need wheelchair-accessible units can wait up to six years for a suitable apartment. That's why it was very important for us to include a lot of ADA-compliant units, both for those with mobility impairments and hearing and vision disabilities. And just to summarize, you know, she mentioned some of the benefits to having this development in Pottstown. In addition to the $12.7 million investment, you know, Obi herself is an example of the local hiring. We have used an architectural firm that's local. We're using a local construction company, local jobs during construction to help fuel that sector of the economy. You know, she mentions our increased tax revenues. Over the lifetime of the project, this is a thirty-year compliance period. And I'll talk a little bit more about compliance. But over the thirty years, our contribution to the tax rules above and beyond the current tax assessment for this property is expected to be just shy of a million dollars extra that's coming into the community. It also, you know, we heard about the Better Landlords Program. When you have this kind of investment coming into a core property in a neighborhood, it inspires others to elevate their quality. You start to see competition for good tenants. And that inspires others to invest what they can to bring up the standard of the quality housing. Not to mention that bringing an art gallery into the neighborhood will increase positive activity in this site. In terms of property management, Housing Visions is celebrating our 25th year this year. We are a property management, development, and construction company. And with our track record, we've built over a thousand units of housing in 300 buildings across 11 different cities. So we've met various challenges. And one thing that folks will attest to in the video clips that you'll see is that our approach is really tailored to each community. The reason that we focused on the arts community in Pottstown is because that is a level of activity here that really impressed us. And our community partner said, "This is what we need. There's a market here for this kind of housing, for this kind of economic development, and we want to fill that need." In terms of additional investment, we'll be hiring two full-time staff to manage the property onsite, forty hours a week. We'll have a leasing office onsite in addition to a maintenance office. So when there are concerns, again, I kept smiling during the Better Landlords presentation because it's near and dear to our hearts that you have to do the upfront legwork to get the good tenants. And then you have to keep those good tenants happy to get them to stay. And that entails having accessible management, timely maintenance, response to maintenance requests, making sure that people are happy in their homes. And then in terms of our tax credit application this year, Judy mentioned, this is the volume. It continues to grow. It's not quite done yet. It's due February 13th. So that's the day that we'll be submitting to the state. They expect to make announcements of awards in June. And from there, we would come back to you and begin the land development approval process. We fully understand that nothing is signed or sealed or decided in that regard. And that's part of the state's course of action as well. They say, "Yes, we'll give you the funding, but it's up to the community to say what's appropriate." So it really, you have the final say in that. And I just want to make sure that that's clear. We have addressed your parking concerns. We are actively pursuing adjacent properties for acquisition. And we'll keep you notified of that progress during this application period. And then, once we're funded and approved and begin construction, it would be about a year of construction, and then leasing would begin. And then we'd be here for a very long time. The thirty-year tax credit period is mandated by the funding source. Our investors will come and check up on the property on at least an annual basis, make sure that it's meeting their standards. The state will do the same. And if we are found to be out of compliance with the tax credit program, it's called a recapture of tax credits. That is a developer's worst nightmare. It's very rare for that to happen. But when it does, it means that you have to pay the money back. We are not in a financial position to do that. And our 25-year track record attests to the fact that we've never had to do that and never intend to. So there's a very strong financial incentive for us to keep our word and maintain both our tenant standards and our property standards throughout the life of the project.
So we're going to go to the video about Housing Visions for you. But I just want to say that, you know, we know that taking a risk is always difficult, that you don't know for sure what's going to happen. And after it happens and it comes out well, people sort of forget how difficult the decision was. But doing nothing and not taking the risk has its own consequences. So we really hope that you will go along with what we've been trying to propose with bringing in Art Fusion as a solid tenant, someone we know well. You know, Genesis Housing is very committed to Pottstown, and we'll continue to be committed to Pottstown. Bringing in Housing Visions, who are signing up for thirty years. So it's really a significant investment and a significant commitment. And we do hope that you will find it to be able to support bringing in high-quality rented housing and to take care of a blighted property.
What we did was we got in a car and went to visit Housing Visions Syracuse a couple of years ago. We were so impressed. The first thing I did was, I'd like to go to their oldest building and see what it looks like. And that's what we did. And it was beautiful. It's over twenty years old. That's a nice, it's starting the inspiration to work with Housing Visions. And we're so happy we did. This is what not, what should be doing is collaborating with other people who do the right things, do those things perfectly, do the job, and that is Housing Visions.
A symbol of urban blight and all, but he will soon come down. Habitat for Humanity and its partner, Housing Visions, today announced the demolition of a stretch of Buildingland Sheridan Avenue. The homes were once featured on Jeopardy as the definition of urban blight. They're being torn down to make way for affordable housing.
That's right, Mary. One of the complaints about the city is the abundance of vacant and rundown buildings. Today, a new apartment building is helping to change the landscape and hopefully to add to the city of Utica. Today, a building that once looked like this is now replaced with this. Genesee Crossing will provide thirty-three new affordable apartments in the city of Utica.
We want to associate that with community revitalization. And partnering with the city of Utica and Housing Visions is great of to, over time, improve the quality of life in the neighborhood.
Empty lot. Now, Housing Visions wants to put twenty of those fifty-one affordable housing units right here, which would help not only with the housing need in this area, but also would help cleaning up the look of this Northside town.
About three-quarters of our city's population qualifies for affordable housing. But the amount of really good, high-quality affordable housing is very limited.
Which is why Northside advocates support turning this vacant lot into this, a twenty-unit affordable housing complex with commercial space on the first floor, proposed by Housing Visions of Syracuse, an organization that has already built more than 1,000 affordable housing units like these across central New York.
Teachers in the area, nursing students, and people who work at places like St. Joseph's Hospital qualify for affordable housing, but have a hard time finding good quality homes. Fixing up buildings like this one, an old orphanage that has been vacant for more than a decade, would immediately address that need.
So we're talking about people who really make our neighborhood great, but right now often have difficulty finding housing that they can afford that's actually decent. And so this is a way to keep them here, keep them more productive, and help them not have to worry about slum landlords.
As Ben was saying, it didn't take a whole long time to convince me that this was a great project. For one thing, there was this amazing portfolio of the projects that Housing Visions had already accomplished. And when we started looking at their portfolio, one of the things that was readily apparent, it was very difficult to pigeonhole these people the way people try to pigeonhole developers who do affordable housing, right? It's like, you know, the public's vision of affordable housing is going to be a negative, it's also a pejorative term, right? And so they've got some sort of preconceived notion of what this is about. And then, you know, looking through the portfolio, each project was unique, reflecting, I think, the view that each resident is unique. These are individual people with individual lives.
These buildings, these structures that have built our city have really made a tremendous difference, you know, in the city as a whole. It's been a great relationship. I know Housing Visions is big over the long term. Community has always part of this project. We look forward to working with them for a very long time.
And we hope that we'll be able to bring Beach Street Factory to be another success for Housing Visions and for Pottstown. With that, see if you have any questions or anything else we haven't covered?
I just have a question regarding minority participation in the process of construction and how do people go about vetting or being vetted for... Because I know when there's federal dollars, there's also some percent tie into minority participation.
Yeah, we work with the state on all hiring requirements to make sure that we're meeting whatever percentages that they mandate. We often exceed those percentages just through our contacts in the area.
Questions? Where does the $12.7 million investment go?
Well, it goes into the building.
To the reconstruction.
About $9 million of that is direct construction cost, $9.5 million. There are fees associated with the administration of the program, as there are with any government funds, you know, a certain amount goes towards the administration. But really, the vast bulk of that investment is coming right back into the building.
Into the building? And would that be done by our local residents? We have a high unemployment rate, local contractors.
Yes. Yeah, we're working with a general contractor, McDonnell Building Company out of Blue Bell. And I know that their subs are based locally. You know, it just makes economic sense to use local labor so that you're not paying additional fees for people to travel. You know, you want to make sure that your crew can get there on time, and that requires that they're local.
Okay.
But I do want to be clear that we're not a job training program, so someone who is just unemployed that wants to do construction, this is a high-quality renovation. So, you know, we'll be having people with expertise in construction be doing this. But we are, the contractors we regularly use who are local have expressed an interest in being subs, and we will be working with that to facilitate them being able to resbid on those jobs and hopefully be able to work locally.
Is there any way to ensure that qualified people who are residents move to the top of the list?
For, for them?
Or for being a sub, or for being the general?
If they're already in the trade, then they certainly can participate. As an individual, I'm not sure how many individuals this job would be hiring. It's more likely that you want to be a contractor, you know, you're a plumber already, a plumbing firm, not someone who's sort of no plumbing.
Everyone has to be insured and, you know, properly sort of...
So nothing has changed in your funding sources of where you're applying for tax credits since the beginning of presentations? $9 million is still coming from low-income housing tax credits, correct?
Well, it's actually the, well, it's the full project cost minus the county funding. So we have... If Ben can help me with the specifics. I know, I don't have my budget in front of me.
I actually have Ben's budget.
Okay, good, yeah.
It's nearly $9 million in the low-income housing credits.
Right, right.
And with that, then, the real estate taxes that are collectible are set. So there would be no reassessment of the property. It's going to be, it's not going to be at fair market value, it's going to be...
No, it's not fair market value. So the real estate taxes, after the project's done, the tax assessor from the county will come out, and they will assess the property at its new value. So it's worth what it is, what it is now, what the condition it is. They'll have access to all the building permits and know the money that was put in. And then they'll do the county analysis of what it's worth, and that will come up with the taxable amount is.
Okay, so I'm looking at, again, Ben's information. And the real estate taxes would go to year, I'll just go down to year 10, because they increase just minimally. And the total real estate taxes in year 10 is $53,496.
That sounds about right.
Okay. And I'm very confused about some of the information from the school district because I did some research, and the per-pupil cost in the borough of Pottstown School District is $17,627. Three students in this building would offset the total real estate taxes that are collectible in the 10th year.
I'd be happy to provide the letter from our tax attorney that says how the calculation was made. That's what we submit to the state, that's what they encourage us to do and rely on as their tax information.
And just on that 17, that's not how you calculate it. It's because like the school building costs what the school building is divided by the number of students. So you add one student to a classroom, but it doesn't mean a new teacher, it doesn't mean a new classroom. It doesn't add $17,000, that's not the way that that math works.
How does the math work, then, with how the individual property owners are taxed for school taxes? Because it's incredibly high in the borough of Pottstown.
It is high. This will increase your tax base. And by increasing the tax base, more tax revenue is given. And if properties around improve too, and other people invest, that increases your tax base. But doing the math from the school district, that doesn't work. Because if one student moves out, the school district doesn't save $17,000.
And you can provide this calculation?
What?
Yeah, the property tax cut.
Yes, okay. Because I'm looking at this spreadsheet from Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency application. And line 44 talks about the real estate taxes. She talked about year 10, 2013, at $53,496 on a $12 million building. I'm willing to guess that the residents that sit up front here pay more than that for our eight or nine houses.
They pay more than $44,000 a year?
I'll bet. I know what mine are, and I'm guessing what the others are. So with our nine little houses, we're paying more than that in real estate taxes. Here you have a $12 million structure, and you only want to pay that amount.
Well, the way that the real estate taxes are calculated with the federal money is through the income approach rather than the property approach. So the basis is, you know, what kind of rents will be generated.
That's all well and good, but that might be legal, but that's not fair to our residents.
The way property taxes are done in Pennsylvania, though, is based on the value of the property by the county tax assessor, and that's what the expert did, was calculate how the tax assessor would come up with it. And that is unfortunately in Pottstown, what Genesis regularly puts into a single-family home is not what we can sell it for. So, you know, what you can sell it for is different than the amount of money we're putting in here. And that's why a private entity won't come and just invest $12 million into that project. It's not going to be worth $12 million when we're done. It'll be worth less.
If you invest $12.7, what do you think it's worth?
That's when the tax assessor came up with what they thought the property value did, and then you'd use the ratio that the tax assessor does, which is about 50%. So there are calculations, I don't have them in front of me, but we can provide them.
It was a small fraction of the investment cost.
And that is, you know, one of the problems that Pottstown faces is that it's not, you know, put the same building, and you put it in Manhattan, and it would be worth a lot more. And people invest a lot more in those places. It holds back investment, that what you invest, you can't get your money out, and that's a limit. So if we can raise the tax base and make properties all worth more, that helps everybody. And so having a big, empty building depresses values. And so if you put this in, it's to support values and hopefully lead to values going regularly up. And then people will be more willing to invest more money into their properties.
Now, let's revisit one of your statements, that when the building is complete, when the project's done, is that 30 years from now, or is that one of these years on this sheet?
That would be about, what, project completion? When the building itself is finished?
Whenever you are claiming that it gets reassessed, this sheet goes up to the year 2030, and even at that year, you're only paying $64,000 in taxes.
Right, it would be reassessed upon completion of construction, which would be approximately December of 2016.
2016?
Oh, I'm sorry, 2017.
Then if the charge continued...
2017, yeah. Forget what any year.
Why does this estimate for real estate taxes continue all the way to year 2030?
Because we will be paying taxes through at least 2030 on this building. We will be paying our annual...
At which rate?
Pardon?
Yeah, which rate? If you're telling me in 2016, we're going to reevaluate it and reassess it at $6 million, that's one argument. But if it stays at the same rate, that's a different argument.
So, let me just say that we're all talking the same thing. So the property is worth, right now, in this condition, a fairly low tax assessment.
Right.
We put in the money to improve it, the county comes out, they reassess it. When we occupy it, they'll reassess it. So that when people are moving in, they come out, they assess it. And they say what the building will be sold. And then they do a ratio of that for what they tax. So at this point, the county ratio is about 50%, 48...
54, maybe.
54, is it? Okay. My math just makes it 50%. So that number, now the next year, the county doesn't come out again and look at it. If they do a county-wide assessment at some point at 30 years, which is likely, that's when it would get reassessed again. And the taxes that are generated are based on the rate that US Council do, the county and the school district. And so those numbers could change. For this application, they ask us to do a projection. And so they hire an expert who looks at the values in the community, when it's finished, what they think it's worth, and they do that projection, and that's how that number comes up.
So the current tax revenues per property are roughly $15,000 a year.
$15.
Right, we are expecting that after improvements, the assessment will increase by at least $30,000 annually to approximately $45,000 a year in year one. And then, of course, it would increase annually at the, you know, rate of 3, I think 3% annually, or whatever, you know, our certain increase percentage. So agglomerated over the initial 30-year life of the project, that would be roughly $1 million additional on the tax revenue.
And if the property stayed empty, in which case it probably would have fallen down and gone even lower, so...
And depressed the neighboring property values.
But it is a mathematical calculation, so, you know, the school district could raise taxes, the county could come and reassess, but for this application, they ask us to project. And so that's what it is, it's a projection that hasn't even increased, you know, we don't know. You may hold taxes level for 10 years, and so municipal taxes may not go up. She can't put an application that way, which is, they have criteria for what you put in, for how much it should increase every year.
Okay, thank you. The, Ms. Mylett and her reports and so forth as far as market analysis. You know, each time we hear a presentation, we get more information. And one thing that concerns me is, first of all, how much is the county adding up for this project?
About $1.2 million, believe me.
Okay. And you have in here, or she has in here, that the Montgomery County Housing Authority reports that they have 578 households on their waiting list for such apartments. Okay? There is only 29 of these type of apartments, which are ADA-accessible and so forth, currently in Pottstown. Where are the artists that, you know, this lady wasn't touched at all on any of the artists that are going to be, this is going to be marketed to?
Yeah, so, sort of apples and oranges, the marketing study has certain requirements. The state asks for you to check off these little boxes, and that's what this report largely does, is looks at this, this, and this, and this. And then we put in the vision and why this project's unique. And one of the reasons that this project is unique is because of the artist component. And we've made this commitment for working with Art Fusion, providing connections between the tenants and Art Fusion, that they'll be members of Art Fusion, be able to take classes there. And that we'll do an outreach to artists to be the tenants. And most of the units are one-bedroom, and so we're really going to be sending out to Pottstown artists first to let them know about the availability of these large apartments with very good light and the opportunity to be close to Art Fusion. And then we'll also be sending out information to artists in the general community, past that, in some of the art trades, some of the cooperations and groups that artists belong to. And they have email newsletters and things like that, we'll be working with those to encourage artists. And then for the tenants that are there, whether they're in wheelchair, and that's what Obie was talking about, is the lack of wheelchair-accessible units, that this building is going to be feeling the arts. So everything from the community room is going to have displays of artwork and galleries and access to Art Fusion. And so tenants are going to be very connected to the arts. And all of the activities that we're doing, and all, what the activities we're going to be doing are all connected to making this a really unique living situation that people would like to be in.
You know, beyond the PHFA market study, you know, this is a requirement for, this is an excerpt that Obie did of our, you know, 90-page market study, just to try to synthesize some of the major points. We did commission a separate arts market analysis from her when we first embarked on this project.
I don't have that in front of me, though, I only have what you gave us.
I can share that with you, and I apologize if that didn't make it into the summary today. But that is what we use as the basis for proceeding in that direction. If there weren't a market for it, you know, we are the business people, at the end of the day, we wouldn't be pursuing that line of business if there weren't a market for these units.
Well, there is a market for it, according to this, and the county, it seems with the 43 units, the county's going to grab them all up because the need is there for it.
I'm sorry, that's inaccurate.
I'm just basing on, the county's already adding up $1.2 million for six units.
That's actually incorrect. They are providing $750,000 to set aside six units for adults with developmental disabilities and behavioral health issues. Those, the $750,000 from the Department of Behavioral Health is a capital subsidy that comes in as an upfront development incentive so that once those units are constructed, we will set them aside on a preferential leasing basis for six individuals with those special needs. So there are six units that are tied to county funding, and that is it.
But, once again, the preface to the Montgomery County Housing Authority, being in her report, states that there's a need for 578 on the waiting list.
There's tremendous need, but the method of finding that is there...
I'm just saying, who's going to occupy these?
But we're going to be marketing to Pottstown, and we believe there's a lot of Pottstown residents who meet the income, who are going to be lining up for a property to be in such a nice apartment. And the criteria...
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that, that...
The criteria that we're looking at will eliminate a lot of the Housing Authority people from not having sufficient income to be able to afford to live there, because this is not, you know, a building that comes with subsidies for each unit.
One thing that I wanted to mention is that we are not pioneering this concept. PHFA just last year funded a development in Philadelphia with the same concept, that they would be marketed to artists with the idea that there is an attraction element there, that, you know, people with similar interests like to live together. And if you can kind of, you know, market specifically to that group, that is actually a permitted item in the federal law, that you are allowed to market to people with an interest in the literary or artistic pursuits, I believe is their language. That's permissible under Fair Housing. That is, you know, something that's quite conventional to be combined with the Affordable Housing Program. And I would be more than happy to provide additional examples of where that's been successful. successful.
The county's kicking in a million, too. Do you happen to know if that's, million two is collected tax money from all the residents in the county, or are they passing on grant money?
It's a combination. Some of the money comes from mortgage, mortgage tax through the Housing Trust Fund.
The Housing Trust Fund. So when you report a mortgage, that creates money in the Housing Trust Fund. So small numbers from the Housing Trust Fund, additional money is from the RDA left...
Yes.
And then, which is repayment of a previous project, repaid its grant money, and so it became available. And then the majority of the money, seven hundred and fifty thousand, is from the Developmental Health Department. And that is a state money on savings that was, the programs that they run created a fund, and that is put into capital to create more units.
So a good portion of that million dollars could have been money collected from our residents?
No.
Collected by the county. Now they're giving it back, so you can build this building.
No, most residents did not. It's not county regular general fund at all. That's not, none of these general funds.
Special fees.
Recording fees for the Housing Trust Fund. So some of the money came from that.
That's two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
All right.
The seven fifty is the savings that the Payable Health Department did in running their programs, that the state had a program that gave that money back from the savings that they did on their programs. And then the RDA money is repayment of a grant from another project, refinanced, repaid it, and now they're using the money again.
Okay.
Let me give you a scenario, kind of piggybacking off of what the conversation was saying. Say you're getting tenants for this building, okay? And you only feel fifty, sixty, seventy percent of the building, okay? What's stopping the county from coming in and saying, okay, we'll take the rest?
It's a state program, so it's, you know, just the way that this program functions is that we're private landlords. We have discretion. At the end of the day, we make a decision on, you know, who to market to and who to lease to within fair housing. You know, under this incentive program, you know, we've agreed to provide these six units on a preferential basis, you know, in part because they've provided this great incentive to do so. Beyond that, it's a private market.
Does he, they can't come to take the rest?
Correct.
Can't?
Correct.
They'd have to use the power of domain and take the whole building and jeopardize the tax credits.
And they want ten, fifteen more.
I'm sorry, Mr. County. You know, this is my development.
Right. And the county understands that this is supposed to be a tax credit project, and they don't look at them that way at all. They're not public housing projects that they think that they control.
Quite frankly, that would defeat the purpose of the tax credit program. This is supposed to be a better alternative to public housing by being controlled by the private market and making us beholden to our investors.
But there again, too, that leads into my confusion, why your expert brought up about the Montgomery County Housing Authority reporting a need and a waiting list of five hundred and seventy-eight households for these type of units.
So when you apply for grants, when you apply for, making a case, so if I was trying to write a grant for Genesis Housing, I would tell you a very sad story about Pottstown. And I would put every sad story I could put in to make that, show how much you should fund our grant. If you're coming to invest in town, I might tell you all the good things that are happening in town and the other investors. And so they ask, you know, are there any other agencies that show their need? And, you know, in the county, there's tremendous need for handicapped units, and that's what she's showing. Not that, you know, that we're going to house five hundred people in wheelchairs, because that's not what this is designed for.
But at some point, if you're presenting information that states that this is available for that, the counties or the state and their tax credits are going to say, wait a minute, you gave us misinformation here.
They don't see it that way. They ask every place, they ask every place...
They're only relying on the information that you're giving them.
Yeah, they ask marketing studies, and the market studies always go to the housing authority and say, how long is your waiting list for this and how long is your waiting list for that? And every market study and these things show that information. But that doesn't mean that that's who we rent to.
In the same vein, they require that the housing authority submit a statement of their waiting list, and this corroborates that information. Does that have a direct impact on who we're leasing to? No, it does not. But again, it demonstrates the need, and it's another, it's a socioeconomic statistic that demonstrates the need for reinvestment in Pottstown. On the flip side of that coin, we submit a huge section stating all of the public infrastructure that you've done in the past five years, the local tourism initiative that was just launched, Bike Pottstown, the carousel, local events. We paint the pretty picture to say why this is a great place to live and why people would want to come here and choose this for their home. It's all providing the whole picture of Pottstown. We basically have to assume that the people in Harrisburg have never heard of any community. If we were located in Pittsburgh, we would have to submit the same information. It's basically starting from square one and saying, here's a community, here's the need, here's what they have going for them, you know, here's how we want to advance that.
And then there's long sections describing what we want to do. And there's all the statistical and background information, and then we say, this is the project we're proposing. And that's what they spill the points off of, of the project that we say we're proposing. And that's what we've been telling you about, is the way that we're proposing the project, not necessarily what the county or some other agency might want us to do, but this is the project that we think is a good match for Pottstown.
Any other questions?
One quick one, because you said you addressed the parking concerns, and I want to go back to that. Because the allowable amount of adults in the building would require, if it was all adults, could potentially have a need for a hundred and six and a half cars. That doesn't include, that's just residents. That doesn't include the Art Fusion employees, visitors, caretakers, the parents, or students. Or, so, how does that need to address? By how much?
So, we prepared a plan that met the current zoning ordinance. And we heard clearly the concern that that wasn't sufficient parking. And so we are looking at acquiring adjacent property to expand the parking and increase the number of parking spaces. But we don't have site control yet, so we can't be telling you exactly where publicly about what we're trying to do, but we'd be happy to talk to you privately about exactly where we're trying to acquire and where we are in that process.
Because you're saying trying to acquire, there is that possibility that you will not be able to acquire those neighboring properties?
One particular property maybe, but we're committed to acquiring.
Is your competition most likely, I mean, more difficult this year than last?
Yes.
And those are projects that are applying most likely have political support for their use, possibly?
Last year, I can fairly say we were beaten on political support. The winning projects in Montgomery County professed their support to the state for their local project, and they received the investment that unfortunately Pottstown did not last year.
And Genesis Housing was involved with another project in a little part of the county. And they had full support for it, bringing in apartments, and these were family units, two and three-bedroom units. But they thought it would improve their area, fit in with their redevelopment ideas, and so they fully supported it. So we added that extra political support to a very strong, great project. It's going to be a great project. It'll be breaking ground April or May.
Was that a low-income project?
Yep. Exactly the same.
Yeah, I was going to say, completely low-income like this one is.
Yep. It's more units, fifty-six units.
And if we can also reiterate that Pottstown already has a tax credit development in the Depperson School Apartments. If you're familiar with that development, you know, from what I can see, it's very attractive and not a nuisance property. I think that what you could expect with this property would be something very similar.
I think there's an age restriction on that project.
Yeah, that is a senior project.
Just like the one that we lost on Riverfront.
Right. And that one, PHFA didn't like the location. And so that one was...
Well, they only went one time, or twice they went.
We applied twice, but the feedback we got was, it was into industrial area, and so they didn't.
Well, that and the, there was several community groups that were vehemently opposed to it.
Yeah, they were, but the big factor for PHFA...
The council was...
Right. The big thing for PHFA was that it was an industrial area, and it was another vacant building, large vacant building near, right adjacent to it. And so they felt the site wasn't proper. This site, they think, worked really well, it would help support the neighborhood. And so, you know, for the neighborhood reasons, they're very comfortable with the site, and they encourage us to continue to fill a strong application.
But there again, too, in defense of that project, it's less than five hundred feet from beautiful Brick Holmes.
Right. Oh, I loved that project. No, I loved that project, but unfortunately, I don't get to try to...
Just trying to figure out what the difference is between these two projects.
Our reapplication this year was motivated in large part by a direct request from state staff that we submit our application. We were told that we were highly competitive last year and just missed the mark, which I find to be encouraging, and we're strengthening our application for the next year.
But I have to say that if we don't get it this time, we won't be back again. So that'll be it. And, you know, it'd break my heart to walk away from that building, because Ryan certainly knows what a beautiful building it is inside. I can see what a beautiful building can be. It's a little hard to envision some days, but it was cold today. We were in it today. It was really cold. But it'd be a shame for that building not to get redeveloped. And the private sector can't do it. It's just the numbers just don't work.
Okay, we will have it listed for Monday evening for a letter of support for this project.
Thank you.
As council's aware, we did a reorganization of our licensing and inspections department a while back. And one of the things that was pointed out through the analysis of what we currently have by our new licensing and inspections director is the fact that what we have in regard to rental inspections and making sure that we have a good grasp to capture the number of rental properties in the borough wasn't working as it was intended to do. Topic was discussed through the infrastructure committee. The topic was discussed ad nauseam within the administration, and directed the licensing and inspections director to come forward with a proposal of changes to create a system that is, that works, that's legal, that's efficient, that's fair, and that captures all the rental properties and at the same time is rental neutral. If you recall, I believe it was last month or the month before, council directed the solicitor and staff to move forward with developing some changes to the existing rental ordinance. And I would ask our licensing and inspections director, Keith Place, to come forward and explain the rationale behind the recommended changes.
The proposed changes to rental ordinance for the registration of the licensed portions in the way it is, the scope is limited. Some of the changes are basically technical, changing terminology from code enforcement to licensing inspections. One of the other sections is, Meyer has been based on definitions for single-family apartment and short-term rooms. The change that probably is going to affect the most is going to an annual inspection versus right now, we do it upon change of tenancy, we do it based on the transfer of the property, and we also do it based on if you have a long-term tenant of up to five years. Going to an annual inspection gives us the ability, we're going to be able to document the properties, we're going to be able to, basically, going to the annual inspection, it's going to give us a better ability into taking care of the issues where we have quality of life issues. It does help out with promoting economic development, it's going to promote neighborhood stabilization. The other issue is it's going to ensure that we have safer home properties with tenants. It's also going to improve the local housing stock, and it's going to protect the property and the property values. But the biggest change is going to annual versus how we have it right now. There were approximately, based on two different studies, one that was done in-house, we have fifty-two hundred residential rental units right now. They're based on the most recent one done by the municipal study that was procured. They listed out fifty-six hundred units.
Of the fifty-six, they're currently licensed?
No, sir.
How many are licensed?
We have record of about twenty-five hundred.
Out of fifty-two?
Between fifty-two hundred and fifty-six hundred. Careful, careful. Right, we have a balance.
But if we know about these units now, are we doing anything to enforce licensing of these properties?
We are starting to, but due to the manpower constraints, it's hard to keep up on. And that's what the problem was originally, to begin with.
So how is that going to be resolved, by going to yearly inspections, the manpower constraints?
By going to yearly inspections, we can actually schedule the inspections throughout the year. And it's actually beneficial to some of landlords or a majority of landlords where prior to, they would wait two to three weeks, they might lose money because they couldn't get tenanted in due to the fact that they had to wait for inspections. When we get to once-a-year inspections, we're going to be able to schedule that inspection, and if they have multiple properties, we can do all properties in one day. It's more cost-effective for them in the long run. There were some properties where, based on change of tenancy, they might have had two or three times in a year versus once. The average rate that would be for a single-family, based on the way the rent is right now, is seventy-five dollars. For apartments, it's fifty-seven, and for short-term is thirty. With the new warnings in place, it would be eighty dollars for a single-family, it would be sixty dollars for apartment buildings, wherever it is, anywhere from three to six units, it would be sixty dollars a unit. If it's over six units, seven and above, then it's forty dollars per unit. And then short-term is at thirty dollars.
And do you have the manpower currently to be able to do yearly inspections?
Currently, with budget purposes, we are intending to hire two more inspectors, and that would more than suit, based on all of the calculations, yes.
So until you get those two more inspectors, what are we doing to be able to handle the workload of going to yearly inspections?
More recently, we did hire another inspector in-house. We have situated one of the property maintenance inspectors, she's been certified, she is now helping out also.
Keith, can you speak up a little bit? We came to hear you, we can't hear a thing back here.
Okay.
I got a quiet voice.
I just wonder if it would be more cost-effective and efficient to outsource the entire rental program to a, to an engineering firm?
By outsourcing...
Like currently, we're using Remington-Vernica Beach to pick up some of the rental inspectors, or we have been in the...
We have been in the past, but you're talking about a single person doing inspections three days a week costing on average seven thousand dollars a month.
As compared to a full-time employee with benefits and incentives.
But that inspector was only here two to three days a week also. So they weren't here forty hours a week. The way it was projected and budgeted is revenue neutral. We will have four inspectors dedicated to rental properties. When they're out looking at the rental properties, they're also going to be responsible for looking at properties adjoining it on either side for property maintenance. The intent of the program is not just for rental. The intent is to take care of the property maintenance issues, it's to take care of the quality of life issues, it's to take care of life safety issues, not just on the rental properties. But because the rental program helps institute the rest of this, we're not here just to take on rental inspections, we're here to take on problems that the borough has right now. The intent is to better the quality of life for the population of Pottstown, its residents, its property owners. And that's the intent of the program right now.
Some of you may also recall the Remington-Vernica study that was done on the restructuring of the licensing and inspections department. And one of their recommendations was to enhance staffing for the purpose of catching up and staying on top of the inspections. We were understaffed. We were understaffed.
And by going to a once-a-year program, you're becoming proactive versus reactive. What's been troubling the department for the longest time is everything's been reactive, and it's reactive to tenant complaints, it's, it's reactive to working with the landlords, trying to make things right. Working together by having this program, there's going to be a better interaction between the landlords, the property owners, and the code enforcement, licensing inspections department.
And I just have one more question that was, I know I heard concern of many, and it was a question that I really had. The, the current county housing inspections are done yearly, and the tenant can opt to have it done every six months if they choose. How does that work in conjunction with the borough inspection? So essentially, it could be, they could be, a voucher housing apartment could be inspected two and a half times a year, one and a half by the county, and then one time by the borough. Is the borough going to work with, with the county together to streamline that, or will it still be two separate inspections?
It will be two separate, two separate inspections, the borough itself will be doing its own inspections. The county actually requires upon their inspection that there's a certificate that's been issued by the borough, that the borough has actually inspected it separately. I don't honestly know how many times the county's going to come in and inspect those properties, they do have it regulated or mandated at least once a year. If the tenant requests for other inspections, then that will be up for them, but the borough has always done inspections, it's usually been on change of tenancy, and that's usually what the county looks for.
Council Miller on that topic also, the county, the inspections that are being performed by the housing authority or for the voucher housing, they do not, by regulation, by the, the fair housing law, they do not share with us when they're doing those inspections or whether or not they're doing those inspections. They care whether we're doing them, but we have nothing to do with the voucher inspection, so they will never be married because of the fair housing law.
So would they be married to the Better Landlord Program for the same purposes that I mentioned about housing discrimination?
Vouched housing, I can't answer that because I doubt it because, again, vouched housing is what it is, it doesn't have anything to do with a rental property. It's, it's a means for the landlord and the tenant to be able to coexist, but it has nothing to do whether the property is a rental property or not a rental property.
Oh, no, that's interesting. It's a red herring.
I think I've asked you before, Keith, Reading has a similar annual inspection, correct? The, no?
What was that?
Reading.
The city of Reading.
The city of Reading.
Reading has a similar program. There are different boroughs, cities, municipalities that have different rental programs, some are annual, some are biannual, some are once every six years, some are once every five years, majority of them are based on change of tenancy, but to be able to administer a program and be able to administer it properly, to be able to administer it where it's financially suitable, because I have a responsibility to the constituents, your constituents, to the residents, to the taxpayers and the property owners of the borough, not to overburden everybody with super cost, and it actually becomes more beneficial, cost-effective for the borough to administer it, and to be able to go to a once-a-year, be able to put in place a program where we can continually set up the inspections, work with the landlords, work with the property owners, so we're not doing one property here one day, they schedule for another property two weeks later, and they have to wait three weeks or four weeks before they can get an inspection, and then they lose money based on the fact that they can't get a tenant in because they're waiting on us.
I, for one, am a little concerned that I think we're, we're being a little bit too aggressive from going from every five, once every five years to once every year. I mean, even in doing that, we, we still had over 2,600 units that are unlicensed with once, you know, every five years. You know, I would rather see, even if we, you know, bite that in half and go maybe once every two years, and try and get all of these units licensed, because I guarantee you that 2,600 that are licensed are the good landlords, and they're the ones that don't have any issues with their property. And, you know, I've had conversations with Mark on this, and I haven't had with you on this, you know, Mark certainly is your boss to do this, but I have concerns that I don't think we can get it done in hiring two more people and, and check all these units out, even though they may need to, I don't think we can do it all in one year. And I know we have the fallback of using Remington to, you know, catch up and do the others, but, you know, if you have to go back if there's, you know, reinspection, then you gotta, you know, these are a lot of properties, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't be inspecting them, I just don't think we can do it. I think logistically, I mean, and I know you inherited a lot of this, and in the past we've been very poor, and, and I guarantee you the other 2,500 or 2,800 that aren't licensed, they're the ones that are, the crimes going, they're, they're the ones that the police are going to all the time, you know. I think maybe in conjunction with the good landlord or the better landlord program, and, you know, maybe, you know, not jump too quickly into this since we were just given this presentation on the Better Landlord Program, that we may want to work those two in tandem, because the recommendation may be, you know, from that program, well, we inspect it every three years, and once you get a handle on it, it could be once every four years, or when there's a tenant change, you know, that's just some ideas, but I think once a year is, I, I just don't think we're going to be able to do it, I don't know how the rest of it.
Yeah, I actually was going to say this even before you got applause for your comments, but, yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing, and I, I look at it from, from several perspectives. You know, on the one hand, I understand that we have an issue with substandard rental properties, and we need to get a hold on that. However, we also have, you know, there, there are several rental properties on, on my block that are fine, good tenants, good landlords, no issues, and, you know, I tried to put myself in the position of, not even from the landlord's perspective, but the good tenant's perspective. I, I don't think I want somebody from the borough coming in once a year to, you know, interrupt my personal space, so I, I think, I, I think I agree, I think once a year may be too aggressive, it may be overdoing it for, for what we're trying to do. I, I understand the need to get a handle on the, the bad rental properties, you know, I was, as you were talking about the two years, I was thinking, you know, when I was commissioner at Professional Occupational Affairs, you know, our, our professional licenses were issued on a biennial basis, so if, you know, we give a doctor's license, a nurse's license, a barber's license for a two-year period, maybe that's a more appropriate number, it would certainly be less intrusive to the tenant, less burdensome on the landlord, and, and still accomplish our goal, maybe just not as quickly, but also, you know, better accomplish it with the existing manpower that we have, so.
Well, see, I even go beyond it, though, I mean, I don't mind hiring extra staff to, to try and catch up with what has been, you know, obviously, we haven't been doing a good job with the current staff that we have, and so we gotta do something, and I think the residents are crying about crime, and we know the crime, the report shows us where the rental properties are is where a lot of the crime is, and we gotta get rid of the derelict, and we gotta get rid of the bad landlords, and, you know, and I'm tired of the good landlords taking it on the chin for the bad ones, but there again, too, the landlord association group's got to go after these bad landlords because they're making them look bad, and we have to react with everyone being thrown in the barrel, you know, and as a result, this is, you know, one of the ways we're looking at doing it, and unfortunately, the, the good landlords are the ones that suffer the most because they do follow the rules.
So how do we find, ferret out the ones that are not licensed?
Well, we've already been told that they know 2,600 of them, we know the rental units are 5,600, we got the address, and we start sending them and closing them down.
Yeah, frankly, I'd rather see focus on that as the immediate step, rather than going back and inspecting the, you know, the portion of the 2,500 that are registered, are licensed, and have been complying with our requirements.
You know, you might want to consider maybe like a tax amnesty, they come in and report it and get licensed, leave you alone, if not, it's got to be very costly.
There has to be some kind of way.
We have to understand a rental is a business, they file a schedule, say, just like any other business, if you violate, whether you be a dentist or a licensed carpenter or whatever, there's severe penalties.
But I'd be willing to bet my monthly salary that I receive as a councilor, that every one of the people that are in here that are landlord are licensed. The bad landlords aren't in here. They're putting their nose at us and they continue to, and that's got to be the co-op between the good landlords, the good councilor, and what does it take? Well, we're getting around an answer, but, you know, that may be far more important. You gotta keep the association in the loop.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're right, it is a business, and they don't want their business affected. Anything we do is going to affect their business, but if it's going to be a positive effect, they're going to be on board.
Well, then, I, I agree with Travis, the manpower should go in there, the focus on finding the violators.
Well, you, and again, you know who the violators are, you have the database.
Correct. Which was the purpose.
Correct. So it's not finding, it's now just go get them.
Enforcing.
I mean, the ordinance is written, it can be adapted and changed, whatever, I think at this point, we'd be, you know, remiss to just jump ahead with doing something half-cocked until, you know, this is all new that Keith is hearing today, that, you know, maybe we don't want to go that route of every year, you know, still go ahead and hire the new people, you know, I think, you know, if we have to, you know, bite the bullet somewhere, we'll do it.
I'm willing to table this ordinance if we will refocus on finding the non-cooperative side.
Right, well, that's the start, and that's been since, I don't know, when did the landlord licensing agreement take place, how many years ago?
Twelve. Initially, it was 2002 with the first instance of registration and licensing, and then it was amended, I guess, in 2010 when, when Mr. Boakes was the manager, so it's actually been in place for a number of years, it's been undergoing transition and revision, you know, more recently, but obviously, this is a significant change based upon the frequency of inspection.
Does anyone happen to know the cost for violating the non-licensed?
Well, somehow, I remember there was, you know, they would lose their UNO.
Yeah, the penalty is a revocation of the license, if you don't have one, it's by, by, by ordinance, $600 fine, but again, that's, that's a prosecution that the district justice has to fine you in violation of, and it's a, it's a criminal penalty, so to speak, so it's not like it's a fine we can just send out, so it requires a hearing and notice and due process, so that would be something that would need to be done regardless of what we have in place.
Is there a statute on how high we can make the penalty?
The penalty, sure, violations can be up to $1,000 in the burden.
Okay.
Is there some consensus at council that we consider an ordinance with a two-year cycle, is that something you want to head to? Again, I know Mr. Place had some ideas in mind for this year, and if, if council was inclined to want to do something along those lines, we still have a large part of the year once the ordinance would be in place, it certainly could happen within the first quarter of this year, but we would need direction, and certainly don't want to keep changing an ordinance if council's not sure they know exactly what they want as far as the answer.
Well, one thing I want to comment, I can't remember which one of you stated it, but you stated about we just received the information on the count today. We've actually had that information for a while leading into budget time, that is what this program was developed on, that actual number, so although it's new to council and the community, we developed this projection upon that number of the 50, whether it's 56 or 54, it was developed on that, that number.
Okay. I'm willing to table this for a month.
I would suggest that Mr. Toroni's suggestion of the continued forward with adjusting it, adjust it to the two every other year, and if, if it makes sense to phase it in slowly through the year to get our feet on the ground, that would be fine, too, but I, I would suggest to council that it's not wise, from our perspective, from a staff perspective, to just set it on the table.
For a month. If council wants to go through with it, I will agree to that.
Is there any thoughts on the, the two-year, I mean, is that too aggressive?
As opposed to, obviously, three or four, I think two would be a little bit.
I mean, I would, I would certainly go no, no more, or I wouldn't go any further than every three years, two years is certainly better than every one year.
Well, right now, it's every five years unless there's a change of tenant, right?
Tenancy or a property transfer.
So those are going to go away?
Correct.
You have three twos every year.
And I'm assuming internally, these would be spread out, so that, you know, every year, we're doing some inspections.
Correct. Internally, the, the goal is once we get through the, the first cycle, whether it be a year or two years, we then have each license on a schedule, for instance, if you're July the 23rd this year, a good chance you're going to be July the 23rd in either one or two years.
In that way, they give us time to make sure we can, you know, retain the staff to take care of all those inspections, preserve.
Now, with it, it's supposed to be revenue neutral, with this going to the two years, you know, certainly it's going to have an impact on your budget, just so the rest of council realizes that. But we've been down in the codes department by how many codes officers?
Three.
Depends on who you ask.
Well, there was at least four or five when I first got on council, and we couldn't keep up with what we were doing then, that's what concerns me.
If there's good staff that's in place right now, if we're very capable, we change these things around, doing education more, the additional two that we're talking about putting on will also help with not just the rental inspections, but also keeping up on property maintenance issues, and also keeping up on catching up on some of the existing situations that we've been talking about, but it will also allow them to do the proper follow-up.
We came in a little late.
I hate the microphone. Basically, by putting on the additional manpower, we're going to be able to do the follow-up that's necessary, and that follow-up is catching up on the other landlords that have properties out there that aren't registered. Not only that, we're also going to be able to keep up on the property maintenance issues and the quality of life issues here in the borough, but it does come down to manpower.
I mean, that's been one of my goals since I've been on council, and that's, still has not been achieved yet, and that's to get the landlords who are renting properties, that's a, you know, it's a business, you need to be licensed, you know, that way, that's the only way we know if we have any control over what's being done, you know, so it's part of doing business.
And so hopefully, in the first year, if we're going every other year, you're going to hit the 2,500 or 2,800 that currently aren't licensed.
There is a plan to address all the issues.
Well, in talking to you this week and also coming through your department, I certainly hope that one outcome of this is that the aggression and passion that you have to undertake the issues doesn't get minimized by, you know, saying the time crunch. I think some assertion and aggression is needed, and so that's all I wanted to say.
I was hired to do a job that will get accomplished.
Okay.
Steve, could I be recognized?
You'll have to wait to the end of the meeting, sorry.
The very last slide?
Yeah, during public comment, I don't want to break rules that we have in place. Thank you. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, continuing on to number seven, Parks and Rec's bicentennial beer garden request, did I say that properly?
Thank you, Mr. Toroni. The, as you all know, 2015 represent-
The, as you all know, 2015 represents the Pottstown celebration of the bicentennial of our incorporation. And the bicentennial committee, along with Parks and Recreation, working hand-in-hand, will be sponsoring several events in 2015. June the 13th at Memorial Park at the Bandstand area, July the 18th at Riverfront Park at the Rotary Pavilion area, and August the 15th, again, at Memorial Park in the Bandstand area. They are requesting permission from Borough Council to move forward with a plan to establish controlled beer gardens at those locations. And the best example I can provide you with is the one that the Carousel does on High Street for the Carousel flavor. It will be a self-contained beer garden. Public access will be controlled. And their intent is to use nonprofits from the borough for the purpose of acquisition of the licensing, acquisition of the product, and for the actual distribution of sales. The only involvement the borough will have in the alcohol is as we do for the Carousel, providing the tent and the fencing and the tables. So with that stated, Parks and Recreation is asking for permission from council for those three dates at those three locations at the beer garden.
Any questions? Okay, that will be listed. Carousel lease, I guess that's yours, Chuck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Toroni. As council's aware, the borough has leased to the Carousel the metal weld site for purposes of its Carousel. Under the current lease, there was a requirement that the council had imposed that the Carousel become operational by December of 2014 in order to qualify for the ability to exercise renewal terms. Obviously, the Carousel is not yet operational and open to the public. I understand that's not far off. But again, this was kind of a trigger date to make sure that council was looking at the agreement. And since we're not there yet, the Carousel has requested an extension or a modification to the existing terms so they have the ability to become operational.
I was contacted today and they've assured us they will have representatives here Monday night if you have any questions.
Okay, the YN, or YWCA, excuse me, loading zone request?
The YWCA has submitted a letter to the borough. Some of you may be aware, at their 315 King Street location, in front of the building, there is a no parking zone that was established several years ago for their purpose of letting students in and out, taking the daycare kids in and out, dropping people off. They've come to a realization that when a parent brings a small child three years of age, they don't just drop them off. They get out of their car and they go inside and make sure the child gets inside. And in the process, they're illegally parked in the no parking zone. So they are requesting that the parking, no parking zone be designated as a 10-minute parking-only zone between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and then no parking the rest of the time.
And how would they enforce it?
Chief, all right with that?
Yeah.
How would they enforce it? We would enforce it. The police department would enforce it as they do if somebody parks there now.
That makes sense, but I have some concerns about what some of their other concerns were, which was lighting, criminal activity.
We met with the YWCA staff in that regard, and we are in discussions on those topics. They aren't part of this request for tonight.
I only ask because I'd like to see those other things be resolved.
We're working on it. I know that the LED lighting is hopefully a component that we will see in 2015, which should address that issue. And as far as the drainage issues, Public Works has already been looking into that. So hopefully, that's resolved.
Okay, the amendment fee resolution for trash. Dan, I'll turn this over to you for, since you're the chair of the Finance Committee as far as the recommendation.
And as I understand, there's a reduction in the fee for residents per year. It's thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars. I'm sorry. Thirty dollar a year savings. This was caused by people cooperating and putting their recyclables in the blue containers rather than the red. And since all of you cooperated and worked for it, then the rewards should be returned to you. Finance Committee actively asks that council approve this Monday evening.
If I could just follow up, there is a fee resolution in draft in addition to the change in the annual service charge for the trash collection and disposal. There had been contemplated, obviously, the change for the fees for the licensing and inspection. Obviously, that will come off, so that'll be subject to being tabled. But there were two other minor changes that were part of the resolution that I think should still be part of the resolution for Monday night. The first is the adjustment to the property maintenance fee with respect to clean and lean, whether it's in-house or a third party. That's listed in the resolution. And the other one, I guess, is based upon a recommendation by our finance director with respect to payment by credit cards. When real estate taxes are paid by credit cards, there is a service fee charged, charged to the borough. That's 1%. So we're passing that through to the person using the credit card. So that will become part of the fee schedule as well. So the fees that would be up for discussion or passage on Monday would be the trash fee, would be the adjustment to the property maintenance charge fee, and the 1% pass-through for credit card usage for real estate taxes. So that would be listed for Monday night for your consideration.
Any questions? Okay, that will be listed. The next item is the pet adoption event. I guess this is a new event that's occurring on the 16th.
Anything about this, Cheryl?
I do know, well, I know that Bill Sharon is actually the organizer of this event, and it's to bring areas, organizations that do nonprofit pet adoptions together in the park to have the opportunity for, to place, you know, pets in good homes as well as do some fundraising, bring the community together through animals, something that we're working very hard on in our community. I'm very excited about this because this is huge and it's done in many other communities. And it's a great opportunity for the nonprofits as well as everybody that's looking for a wonderful pet to adopt.
And the request is for the use of Smith Family Plaza.
Is that at Smith Family Plaza as opposed to the park?
I was going to say, if it was in the park, more than likely, there'd be some fees involved, but.
But not at Smith Family.
Any questions? Okay, it'll be listed. The next one, highway materials bid award. Is she Doug?
Yeah, we have our annual materials, stone, blacktop, signposts, signs, street line painting, water pipes, all the fittings, hydrants. Pretty straightforward. There's a couple of things that Chuck will have to review as far as consistency with the bidded material. But otherwise, they're highlighted as to who the perspective would be to get, get the bid.
Any questions? Okay, it'll be listed. Zoning, we've already covered that. Harp for 267 King Street. Any questions on that? And then the administrative approval, 631 High, 415 King. Any questions on those?
What are, yeah, what are they, the administrative approval? What would be?
631 East High Street was replaced with an old business sign with a new business sign. 415 King Street was replacement of a metal roof with a standard 30-year fiberglass dimensional shingles.
Okay. Now, we're up to the board vacancy. The first one is the blighted property. I'm assuming, Mr. Ween, that everyone wants to re-up again on your.
As far as I know, everyone does. They've been doing a fine here.
Okay, the Borough Authority, we have, there's a document attached that came from the authority, recommended the reappointment of Mr. Benner. It's a letter of support. Okay, any questions on that? EAC, who's up on the EAC?
I think it was a resignation. It's still, and we don't have any recommendations.
All right, so he's, so there is no recommendation. Okay, Harp, there's two five-year terms that expire April 1 and 2018, and April 1, 2019. Anyone, who's up on those?
It was a resignation.
One's Eli and the other one is the realtor.
One interested party, Stephen Ailes.
At your desk, there should be a request to, of Stephen Ailes. And I did check with Chuck already, so this, according to the Harp Board, he does not need to be a resident in Platteville.
The council can waive the residency requirement, so.
But it seems like he's got some experience and so forth in doing this. Any questions, reservations?
Would he satisfy the real estate requirement, real estate banking experience?
Don't believe so.
We're not, we don't think so, based on the resume. We don't have enough specific information. It doesn't appear that he indicated that he was a realtor.
Okay, the next one is the planning, or, excuse me, Vida. Who's up on Vida?
I think it was Sue, because she resigned.
Oh, she resigned?
Yes, she.
And Sheila has no?
She's not given us any.
Russ, do you know of anyone that?
Oh, not right now.
Okay. If you can get somebody that you think that Sheila might want to recommend, if she can get it to Jenny before Friday. Planning Commission, we end the.
Yeah, we have one possible vacancy.
Andrew Kiefer.
And I do also have two people who expressed interest, but they have not sent me a letter yet.
And that's an appointment that would occur at your February meeting based upon the expiration of the term. So you do have another month before that's open.
Vacancy Board, this is an important task. It was.
It's Jim's turn right now.
Oh, it is?
As far as I know, he wants to come in.
Okay. Zoning Hearing Board, we have Mr. Johnson that wants to re-up again. And then we have another person that, Todd Farn, that has requested that position. And we have one person requesting alternative position, which is Doug Lenhart, correct?
Yeah, I think they're both, Todd and Doug are both applying for the alternative position.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
I thought it was for the. I misread that.
No, he didn't state that's knowledge that the council board has.
Okay. So we'll have that recommendation for Monday evening. Seventeen, civil service eligibility list.
Chief? Thank you. Our civil services expired December 2 of 2014, and we recently had a resignation of a police officer. At this point, I would like to go forward and create a new one.
And the lists are good for two years, correct? Once a list is established, it's good for two years, correct?
Well, the new rules are the list is established for one year, and then the civil service board can approve for the next year. If you remember correctly, this list that we had established, we took seven names off of it. It was only 11 names long. Two of them have since gone employment in other agencies. So we really have one name on the list. But it's expired.
Okay, that'll be listed. Okay, and we're up to eighteen, comments from citizens present.
Eric Skatch.
That's me.
Yes.
Yeah, so we can hear.
My name's Eric Skatcher. I'm a local landlord, somebody that, somebody that seems to me like everybody hates in Pottstown. It gets me a little nuts. But aside from that, I want to, first of all, say that I'm opposed to annual inspections. Two years, three years, sounds a lot better. But what I'm really concerned about here is, however, I am most concerned about room size requirements. If this new rig passes and I am not grandfathered in, I lose the right to rent one apartment for sure and possibly two. I've had multiple permits, spent thousands of dollars, invested hundreds and hundreds of hours of my own sweat equity. Many, many people seek smaller apartments. Smaller means less expensive. Doesn't necessarily mean I certainly don't want any criminals living in my place. But this allows a less expensive apartment, allows renters to save money for a car, for a house, et cetera, et cetera, and, or to live fuller lives. And it could be a young person or an old person. Now, as long as the prop, okay. Now, as far as the room size goes, I feel that as long as the property is safe and its systems work properly, the agreement should be between the owner and the renters. Now, why does a unit have to have one room of 120 square feet? I realize that most of you have pretty nice houses and 120 square, 20 square feet sound small, but it can be more than adequate for a lot of people. Why does a bedroom have to grow from 70 square feet to 120 square feet for an additional person? The room is used for sleeping. If the renters are two friends, the one up split the cost of the rent, what's wrong with bunk beds? According to the web, each habitable space, or each space to be considered habitable, has to be 70 square feet, except the kitchen. What about the bathrooms? Do they need to be 70 square feet? How many, maybe even in your homes, they might not be 70. I don't think I have any as far as the bathroom goes, there are 70 square feet. Homelessness is a problem in America. Please drop these requirements so the problem doesn't get worse. That's basically, I had more, but other things were supposed to come. Thank you.
Thank you. John Wklowski. John Wklowski. Mr. Corrigan.
Members of council, I'll be very brief. I have the privilege of sitting here through your entire meeting tonight. And on rental ordinance, I think the exchanges that I've heard among council are very appropriate and very positive. I share those. I also, to his credit, want to compliment Keith or whoever else is on that department. My staff has had no problem scheduling rental inspections. No problems. We have more than a few units, and we live by the code. I would suggest to you that since 2010, when it really began to be enforced, that landlords who are here this evening particularly have certainly adhered to the inspection requirements, that they're not a concern to you. When you hear the difference between 2,600 and 5,600, and you realize that three years plus has passed since the whole program has been initiated, it seems to me that there ought to be some accountability by the codes department, not only to Borough Council, but to the landlords who have lived with the ordinance and have observed it. And I would suggest, and I would ask that council consider, not only going to two years, but going to three years. I think the extra year will give your staff an opportunity to chase the deadbeat landlords, those who are not complying, and to bring more registration. That's what you really need. The people who have registered by living by it and they're upholding it, and I can tell you that I, for one, and I'm sure everybody else in this room, speak very positively about the program to our tenants. I speak with and meet every tenant who comes into our system, and I don't miss a word. And believe me, the attachment that I have to attach to all the leases, which acquaints the tenants with their obligation, is pretty effective. And if you sit down and if you talk with them, they understand it, they get the message. And we tell them more than once that they're our best eyes, ears, and nose as far as what goes on in the complexes, because we're not there as owners. So I would suggest to you that it's appropriate to consider going to perhaps five years to three years. Give your staff a chance to get comfortable in their new skin, so to speak. And at the same time, really get into the enforcement side of it. You've got a great solicitor, you have great people in staff, no one shuts the door on anybody, from our experience. And those inspections, we can live with a week, week, or two weeks, week. And it's not usually longer than that. By the same token, our units are always up to speed, we comply with everything. By the same token, our units are always up to speed, we comply with everything, and I think the inspectors realize that, and they certainly appreciate it. I think we are a business, there's no question. You know, as, as you know, I practice law, and I've been returning for 45 years, and used to sit, where Chuck sits for many, many years. And I'll tell you, in the process, you really get to appreciate what Pottstown has to offer, the neighborhoods, and the need to invest and upgrade units so that we have something to offer that's special. We have tenants who, you get a higher caliber tenant, they expect maintenance, they get maintenance, they expect improvements, and when they see where their rent's going, they don't have a problem paying higher rent. But I think from the standpoint of an administrative headache, you got the right man, you hired somebody. Keith comes up with an excellent reputation and background from where he was. He knows what he's doing, but we who are complying with it can't take a knee-jerk reaction to going from five years to one year. And that's what it appears to be. We have tenants, and the higher caliber tenant you get, and that's what you want us to get, the less they want the intrusion. It takes, for our units, it would take one of my staff probably a week and a half to be with the inspector, if he can get in the first time around. When you start compounding that expense backwards, laying it off, we can't charge any more rents for trying to do the best we can to upgrade the housing stock. We don't want to charge any higher rents, frankly, if we can get the fair rent for what we're giving. But when you look at the ripple effect of this on the owners, it's not only the inspection fees. Unfortunately, we have some projects, we fall in that $40 number and might go down. That's not the point. The point is that it takes people that are on staff for maintenance and other purposes to accompany your inspector into every unit. And believe me, that can take time. We don't go into units unless there's an emergency, or unless we get a maintenance call. And when we do, we always have to tell them ahead. You have to notify them if you're running what we should be doing as far as being responsible landlords, better to units, or better landlords. We all want to do that. But believe me, if you can reduce the 2,600 who are not registered and really get into a publicized, advertised, promoted enforcement program, you're going to find it's going to become effective, and you're going to make better strides in that respect than taking time to inspect units that you know are up to code. And if you find anything, it might be a light bulb or an emergency bulb out. Certainly appropriate to find it. We welcome inspections, and I think I speak for any of the landlords in this room who are here tonight. They wouldn't be here if they weren't respectful of what you're trying to do. They're here. Don't abuse them by putting them through an annual inspection when you have 2,600, and you have the enforcement, you have the right to enforce it, you have the ordinance in place. You've got to get after them, you've got to find them. And you're able to do that. So, you know, if Keith needs help, getting some help. But clearly, the intention is good. I think the exchange of ideas up here among the council, people have been, you know, right on point, right on point. Question, the issue is, get the deadbeats registered, shut them down. You'll get greater investment in your rental properties. You'll have rental properties that will attract professionals. That's what we've tried to do. And it's been a program, it's been now two, two and a half years. And believe me, it's made a difference. It's made a difference. We have two vouchers out of a lot more units. And they're good tenants. They're not bad tenants. Many times with vouchers, it's their friends they attract and other activities that they think are beyond their control. The tenants are responsible for their guessing, and you've got to promote that. But I think if you go from five years to three years, I don't think anybody can complain. That seems to be very responsible. And in that interim period, go after the 2,600. I'd like to come back here to the next amendment, whenever that happens, and here the 2,600 is down to 1,000. If you can make that kind of progress in two or three years, believe me, the character of the communities and the neighborhoods will definitely change. Parking issues will change every year and a year. So I apologize for interrupting earlier, I should know better.
That's all right. And we will have, Borough Manager will be, you know, in conversation with Keith to, you know, see what the recommendation is. If the recommendation is from staff that they can handle and do it in two years, you know, I'm going to support that.
But that accountability, I think, to the good guys...
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
Is appropriate. They're accountable to you. And Keith didn't put any up to any of this. We didn't rehearse this, did we, Keith?
No, sir.
Okay, but I, I think it had to be said, because there is a difference, and it's noticeable, and we all want to work together. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
I'm a homeowner in Pottstown. My concern is landlords that are not being held accountable for their tenants. You know, as you are well aware, that's a major problem in Pottstown. And I know that it was discussed often, or frequently tonight, and I hope that's something that's pursued. I'll use myself as an example. Like I said, I'm a homeowner in Pottstown. I share a wall with a, you know, a problem landlord, they run out to, problem tenants frequently. In less than a year, and I have, I got the public files from this office, in less than a year, they've racked up over 100 pages of police reports, just in that house alone, problems with the whole community. And, and the problem is, is that the landlords aren't being held accountable for this. Now, I'm not sure if there's an ordinance in place for that, or if it's just not being upheld, but it's, it's not. So, you know, I hope that, you know, things move forward in some of the plans that were just discussed this evening, and, you know, towards a resolution to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the extent of the comments, sir.
Okay, councilors, general discussion. Before we start, I just, one announcement. Meredith Current from the County Planning Commission is requesting a volunteer from council to be on the sustainability study program, to be part of the steering committee. Is there anyone that would like to volunteer to do that? I guess seeing none, I guess I will take the...
I assume they meet during the day?
I have no idea when, when they are the meetings, but...
You and I are both on regional planning, and I got a pretty full schedule, but depending on how often they meet and where, possibly.
All right.
Hasn't been established yet.
Okay. Well, we'll put both of us down, as two, since the school district has two representatives on there. Okay, Mr. Kirkland. Mr. Gary.
Nothing.
No famous words? You didn't think of anything when you're traveling home from Harrisburg?
Nope.
No upcoming holidays.
I was just going to make one observation about the housing visions project. I'm not trying to convince anybody on council, but, you know, for the last five years, this is, I've probably met at least a dozen developers looking to do similar projects like this, and this is by far the best I've seen. Most developers won't even touch that place unless they get at least 60. So, I just wish the first, you know, proposal went through, 24 free market with, you know, Argosia, that would have been fantastic, but...
Counselor Miller?
Just along with our movement towards changes in animal ordinances, and they are coming, folks, comes personal responsibility. So I want to remind everybody that's out walking their pets to please keep your dog on a leash, and please pick up after your dog. Lincoln Elementary School, Riverfront Park, Memorial Park are absolutely disgusting with feces. So let's keep it clean, folks, so that everybody can enjoy.
Madam Mayor?
I'm very excited about a musical coming to Pottstown High School. And I have a flyer here that I'm willing to give to anyone who would like to display it in their business or home. And it's February 27th, 28th, and March 1st, and it's $10 per person.
Thank you. I missed that. Okay, we have executive session items.
Yes, it'd be personnel, it'd be free item.
Okay.
No action involved.
We are adjourned.